Stack of papers there. It's time. Good evening. As the mayor was called away on a personal emergency, I will be chairing the meeting tonight. And so, welcome to the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting. Do you please call roll?
Mr. Labor.
Here.
Dr. Rini.
Present.
Mr. Royball.
Present.
Mr. Seagrave.
Present.
Mr. White.
Present.
Dr. Aldrich.
Present.
Mayor Collins. Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Escabel.
Physically present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
We have one absence tonight.
So we do have a quorum.
Yes.
Okay, you would rise in upper side pledge allegiance with me? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests, and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Okay, does anyone have anything they'd like to take off the agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cook.
Yes, I would like to remove number eighteen. That is one eight.
Concur.
Concur.
I have two concurrences. Anything else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Labor.
I'd like to remove item twenty.
Concur.
Okay, have item eighteen and item twenty off. Any further? Hearing that, may I have a motion? Motion. Mr. Johnson in a second room. Mr. White. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Excited?
Number seven ordinance third reading creating section nine point zero four point zero seven zero interference with emergency calls interference with emergency reporting system of chapter nine point zero four offenses by or against public officers and government of title nine public peace and welfare of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
Mr. Cook.
Mr. President. The recommendation of the Public Services Committee. It's approved on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second. Second by Mr. Seagrave. Any comment from the public? Comment from the public? Hearing that, any comment from committee?
Mr. President.
Dr. Rini.
I just wanted to say, um, for any people watching or listening, I'm glad that Mayor Councilman White addressed this on the radio show this morning. But essentially what this does, one, it you can be subject to a misdemeanor for interfering with someone making a nine-one-one call, but you can also be subject to a misdemeanor if if you, uh, call nine-one-one when it's not an emergency. And I, and I realize the reason this has been proposed is that I think the nine-one-one system is abused by some people. But I think the public needs to understand that what we're doing tonight and at least be aware that, you know, if you call nine-one-one and ask for directions, you may be getting more than directions. So. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further comment from committee?
When you're ready.
And Mr. Johnson.
Actually, I support this as well, pretty much for different reasons than Dr. Rini, but somewhat similar. Um, just over the last weekend, there was a lot of Facebook chatter in regards to an hoax that had been brought up on TikTok about people uh, putting zip ties around people's car knobs and things like that. And it basically creates an avenue where people start to fear. Um, in cases, what TikTok did is that, um, when you had a zip tie around your car handle, it was a symbol that you were being monitored for human trafficking. And so this has been debunked. But basically, there was a lot of stir over the weekend in regards to this. And so when people feel fear off of something they see on social media and then call into nine-one-one, you know, looking for information and things like that, that this can also be another deterrent that somebody might be cited for something that can be classified as an online hoax.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Okay, hearing that, as this is on third reading, this is a roll call. So clerk.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Labor.
Yes.
Dr. Rini.
Yes.
Mr. Royball.
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escabel.
Yes. That, uh, the ordinance is approved on third final reading.
Number eight ordinance third reading amending section two point zero eight point zero one zero appointment and term removal vacancy of chapter two point zero eight to the officers and employees generally of title two administration and personnel of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming to eliminate an obsolete position and update a precision governing appointment of judges.
Okay, Mr. Cook.
Mr. President. The recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second. Second from Mr. Johnson. Any comments or questions from the audience? From the public? Comments or questions? Okay, any comments or questions from committee? Comments, questions? Okay, hearing done again, since this is an ordinance on third reading, it's a roll call vote. So.
Mr. Escabel.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Labor.
Yes.
Dr. Rini.
Yes.
Mr. Royball.
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Okay, the ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Number nine ordinance third reading annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming land located between Clear Creek Parkway and South Greeley Highway, south of College Drive.
Mr. Cook, you guys are busy.
Yes, yes, we were. We were, as the other, the other members can attest. It was, it was one of our longer meet, longer meetings in a while. Um, anyway, Mr. President, with that in mind, um, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second. Second by Mr. Seagrave. Okay, any comments or questions from the public? Comments or questions? I keep looking at you guys because you're the public, okay? So comments or questions? Okay, hearing that, any comments or questions from the committee? Comments or questions? Hearing that, again, this is an ordinance on third reading, so roll call vote.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escabel.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Labor.
Aye.
Dr. Rini.
Yes.
Mr. Royball.
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
This ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Number ten ordinance third reading amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from county CB community business and county A two agricultural to CB community business AG agricultural and LI light industrial for land located between Clear Creek Parkway and South Greeley Highway, south of College Drive.
Mr. Cook.
Sorry about that. Uh, Mr. President, I was making a note. Um, Mr. President, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second. Second by Mr. Seagrave. Okay, any comments or questions from the public? Comments or questions? Okay, hearing that, any comments or questions from committee? Comments or questions? Okay, hearing done. Again, this is a third, uh, reading, so we will be a roll call vote.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escabel.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Labor.
Yes.
Dr. Rini.
Yes.
Mr. Royball.
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
Okay, this ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Number eleven ordinance second reading amending section five point twelve point one one zero open container sales and consumption exceptions of chapter five point twelve alcoholic liquor and malt beverages of title five business licenses and regulations of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming amending provisions governing the possession of alcoholic liquor or malt beverages in an open container as specified.
Okay, Mr. Cook.
Uh, Mr. President. Uh, death item failed in Public Services Committee, therefore there is no recommendation. However, for the sake of discussion, I move to approve on second reading.
Second. The motion is second from Mr. Johnson.
Uh, Mr. President.
Mr. Cook.
I, this one's gonna be a little confusing, I'm, I'm thinking. Um, I move to amend by substitute dated November eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second. So I have a second from Dr. Rini. Mr. Cook, would you mind explaining?
Um, actually, I'm gonna refer this one to, I don't see Mr. Brody, would, uh, attorney, uh, city attorney boxer be willing to explain the reason for the substitute?
Mr. President, through you to Councilman Cook, uh, what the substitute, substitute does is clean up some errors uh, that the city attorney's office had in its original draft. Um, and also makes a clarification which with regard to the hours of the ordinance, uh, currently we, um, uh, the proposed ordinance, um, deletes the hours, but then the, uh, current provision of the ordinance, the redraft, um, includes those. So to make it very clear, it deletes it. Um, so this is essentially a cleanup of, um, what was before the council on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and I'm open for questions.
Any questions from committee? Okay, any questions from public? Do we have a raised hand?
We do have a raised hand on Zoom.
Okay, if you would go ahead and please identify yourself.
Yes, this is Brian Bow with the Albany.
Thank you, Brian. Go ahead.
Well, I, I just wanted to say that, um, the open container, uh, does certainly benefit my business and, and other, uh, downtown businesses. And I believe that making it, uh, open for year round, uh, would just eliminate confusion on, on days that sometimes we're not sure whether y'all have passed, uh, to allow that or not. And, uh, and just make it something that, uh, could attract more visitors and, and have, uh, a, a nice thing for, for the locals as well.
Good.
Mr. President. We're on the substitute.
Yeah, we are on the substitute right now. So this is what is cleaning up hours and some other, uh, language in it. So. Okay, any further comments or from public, in the public? Okay, hearing that, any comments from the dais?
Mr. President.
Dr. Rini.
Speaking in favor of the amendment, it, the amendment cleans up some things that needed cleaned up in the original ordinance. Um, and it's an improvement over the original ordinance. So regardless of what your feelings are on allowing, um, the open container law in the downtown area year round, um, you really ought to support the amendment because it's an improvement on what we started with.
Then. Comments or questions from committee? Hearing done, this, and we're on the, uh, we're on this, the, uh, substitute. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Mr. Blayborn said no. Okay, so now we're back on the main motion. Any public comment on the main motion? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, City Council Dominic Bravo, CEO for Visit Cheyenne, uh, and acting director for Downtown Development Authority. Um, basically, and this may feed into some of the, um, requests you have before you later on in the agenda, um, but ultimately, I, I think the biggest thing is, is just the, the tool in the toolbox for what we do when it comes to events. Uh, for many of the things that we have done over the last few years, uh, we've been towards this body requesting, um, these resolutions uh, and just going from a consistency standpoint, it, it just seems like it makes sense, uh, going forward. Uh, I will state, um, I know folks have been asking for numbers, uh, without getting into too much information, I, I think has been shared with you, some of the actual sales tax that's been generated. Obviously, I can't pinpoint it directly to, um, alcoholic beverages as something that in initiated that, but I will say, uh, this last July was our largest visited July ever on record. Um, I will say that there's been approximately an eight hundred and forty-five, um, thousand difference between, uh, twenty nineteen and, uh, twenty twenty-two in, um, that, uh, sales tax that revenue that's, that's been coming back to the city. So there's a substantial amount of funding being done by giving us the tools needed, uh, to put on, uh, the various events that we do. Um, again, we put on a ton of them. Uh, we also support many of them, uh, and the, the main reason it, it just makes sense is it's also that consistency piece. So, um, I can stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. President? Go ahead.
Through you. Uh, Mr. Bravo, are you saying that the improvement in the sales tax is a direct result of alcohol? If that's true, then all the other DDA and Visit Cheyenne programs mean nothing. Uh, is that what we're hearing?
Mr. Chairman and Council Seagrave, no, I, I thought I specifically said I cannot equate that directly to, however, I will say that the events definitely, so events in general have had an uptick in sales tax. Um, and all of our visitors that come in to see us, it's about a ten to twenty percent uh, increase in the sales tax based on visitors that have come over the last few years. So in that piece, I can say actual correlation, there's a few data fi things that we, I can dive into tons of data again, the data fi things were specifically to establishments that uh, serve alcoholic beverages. So that one is a little more concise in regards to that, but it's a little hard to, uh, literally like geo-reference folks that may or may not list, but like apple tags on, uh, cups and things. But other than that, um, I just say that there's an uptick by being able to put on successful events.
Mr. President. Mr. Seagrave, through you, can you discuss events that had alcohol and compare those to events that didn't have alcohol? Is there an uptick in both or just one and not the other?
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe we tracked it that way. I can try to dive into our data and see if it tracks it separately that way and see if I can get to that info.
Thank you.
This is on second reading, so we have time for that. Dr. Aldrich.
Thank you, Chairman, uh, President Royball. I'm just curious, um, Mr. Bravo, it, when you say that, um, there are events that haven't had alcohol, or actually, Mr. Seagrave said that, and those that have had alcohol, I'm trying to think of any events that we've had that have not had alcohol. Can you think of any that we do during the year that we have not had alcohol?
On the spot, I might have to do, um, Mr. President and Dr. Aldrich, I might have to research it. I mean, I, I know we don't call out things that may still have waivers, like our community appreciation day. Obviously, there was the Oktoberfest going on, so there are events like parallel to it, but not really that we did waivers for. So there are some that we don't specifically have. Um, there's a lot of them that somehow way, shape or form, they might be tied into.
The, there's a parallel that, um, a parallel activity or event that offers alcohol. Because I, I was sitting here trying to think of any that I can think of that have been sponsored by Visit Cheyenne or DDA that have not had an alcohol exception or waiver. And I couldn't think of any off the top of my head. So I was just curious if there even could be a comparison, because I'm not sure that there have been any that haven't had waivers or alcohol associated somehow in the course of that particular event or day. Um, I guess the other question I have is, um, I just want to make sure that I understand the DDA, when we talk about the DDA area, um, that also include, would include, for instance, the lamp and the keg on the other side of the viaduct. So would they, we could have individuals who could purchase a, a beer or a glass of wine at the keg or the lamp and walk over the viaduct into the Depot Plaza area under this ordinance.
Um, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Yes. And so I, the last question I have is, um, my understanding was that this doesn't apply to all uh, entities that sell, um, alcohol, that it, it's actually a, a fairly limited number of, um, entities that sell alcohol that would be, um, eligible to participate in this because of state statute. Um, can you tell us what that state statute requires or what entities those are that are able to participate?
Mr. Chairman, without reading the statute in front of me, that might be a better question for the attorney, but yeah, I'm not positive.
Yeah. Did you want to take a stab at that or? Attorney?
Um, uh, Mr. President, if I could get that question again.
Uh, can you tell us which, uh, licenses, license holders would be eligible to participate in an open container law?
Uh, Mr. President, through you to Councilman Aldrich, um, which license holders, I, I don't think there'd be any limitation in terms of license holders, as long as they're within the DDA boundary under this open container, um, substitute.
I was under the impression that state statute only allowed certain license holders, uh, or certain types of licenses to have, to be selling open containers.
I can.
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I spent so much time on liquor this year that, uh, so, um, that way to segue. Um, so when it comes down to it, um, the ones that are allowed to participate are full retail liquor licenses, which is similar to what we I gave to the, um, the rail spur. And then that also includes the Albany and also includes the Crown. And, um, and then I think there's one more and then, because really like the Elks and the Eagles cannot participate because they're a club license. And then, uh, Bar and Grills, because that's what, um, we were trying to bring this up in front of the legislature, but Bar and Grills cannot do open container. And so when people were walking out of the Albany, which looked very similar to the Ribbon Shop, uh, tourists were getting confused and even locals were getting confused on what the difference was because they have a bar attached to them at the Albany and have a full retail liquor license, they can partake where Ribbon Shop is a Bar and Grill cannot. Um, this also, uh, you also cannot do, um, off-site, uh, catering for this under the, um, like the Atlas Theater, the Lincoln Theater, this also puts, uh, the Paramount Ballroom out of it as well because they're a Bar and Grill license. So what it comes down to is breweries, wineries, distilleries and full retail. So you have Blue Raven, um, and the DDA core, the Blue Raven, Freedom's Edge, Accomplice, uh, Black Tooth, uh, Westby Edge Brewing, when they come online, that they'll be able to do it. Um, Chronicles, if they were to sell seltzers like White Claw or Truly's or, you know, or something like that, they could do it, but because of the restrictions we put on it, that it was basically beer and seltzers. So Chronicles would not be able to sell their vodka, tonics and stuff for people to go on the street, but and then we don't currently have a winery in the downtown core.
Can I ask a follow-up questions? Um, so my question, so you just said beer and seltzers. Did you mean beer and wine?
Well, a winery can be qualified. Yes, it's beer, seltzers and, and wine. Because a winery can do it, but we don't currently have one. So if somebody was to, from my understanding, that if you were to take, because it, it was basically going by the APV, this is the discussions that we had had with the police department, um, that with wines and seltzers and beer, that the APV was low enough that somebody couldn't get overly intoxicated like with hard alcohol, and that's why we put the restrictions on it.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. And so the metropolitan would also be an entity that would be able to do this, participate?
Yes, they have a full retail liquor license. So, and then this also gives a flexibility because, um, with the metropolitan, if they, if the entity or the vendor chooses not to participate, that's completely within their right. So, for example, like, well, it's weird because the Green Door is just on that threshold of House Avenue, so they can't participate, which some people would think that they'd be in the DDA core with their location, but they're actually not. But the metropolitan being a full retail liquor license, they could if they wish to participate.
But the Paramount.
The Paramount cannot, because they're a Bar and Grill license.
So, uh, this only covers beer and wine, but you just said seltzer. So is it actually beer, wine and seltzers?
Yeah, because with the APV, the way that it was, yeah, like a, yeah, I'm all beverage.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Escabel. Uh, Mr. President, through you. And first off, a comment, because we heard in public comment period from uh, the owner of the Albany, that he said there was a direct correlation into the, uh, sales at his business because of the ordinance. And if, if between now and third reading, you guys want to talk to some of those other businesses about how their sales went during open container, uh, feel free to. My comment for Dominic. You don't have to answer this one. Um, Richard probably knows, are you, Mr. President, is, or, or our attorney? Would Cheyenne be the first city in Wyoming to do this?
As far as I know, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Sorry, the question was, would be Cheyenne be the first one to do a year-round open container ordinance? And I believe the answer is yes, because everybody else that I've seen is, is seasonal.
In Las Vegas. I'm just. There are other communities, I guess, I would just say there, there's other communities, but specifically in the downtown.
Any further comments or questions? Dr. Aldrich.
I had one more question or comment. I noticed that the hours show, um, if you look under three, um, I was trying to find it here, it's, it talks about from eight AM until, um, four PM, or I mean, sorry, eight AM to ten PM. Is, uh, in the substitute? Yeah. Actually, I thought I just saw, oh, here on three, A, um, that the possession of open containers will shall only be allowed between the hours of eight AM and ten PM. I'm just, I, I guess this is really for me kind of one of the sticking points is eight AM seems really early. And I understand we have people who work shift, work and things. But I'm wondering, originally, when we looked at this for the seasonal open container law, the conversation was around oper, the opportunity for some of our local liquor vendors to be able to offer, for instance, mimosas during the Frontier Days Parade. So, um, knowing that that's only ten days out of the year, I'm just wondering if eight AM really is it, it really is that viable to have that? I mean, I, I think most of those in places that you mentioned that would be eligible aren't even open at eight AM. Um, so I'm just curious. I, I, my comment, I guess, is that eight AM seems, and ten, ten AM, uh, is a fourteen-hour period every single day, and I I think it might be a little excessive.
I can reply. Okay, Johnson. As stated, um, the route, when this was done two years ago, that was the, um, kind of premise was going off of the Frontier Days parades, pancake breakfasts and other things. And as you stated, the majority of these places are not open at eight AM unless there is an event that correlates that requires them to do so. And so really with that having at eight AM, it offered them flexibility if they were. I've always stated, and I stated this in front of the Liquor Commission, that, um, because when we dealt with it, um, on the last council, I wanted it to be twenty-four hours. And then if you had staffing, we're paying your payroll, paying your insurance, and you actually had, like you said, um, you know, not even graveyard, but third shift people coming in at four in the morning. If you had clientele to serve and you could pay your employees, why not offer the flexibility? So kind of to steal one of Dominic's things, if this is just taking one more thing out of the toolbox. So if you, literally, I can, just like I told the legislature, I can always find a loophole in it. Or, you know, when they're like, okay, now I can't do it at eight, I have to wait till ten. So then we have to go back in and are we gonna have to come by resolution now to do the parades and any event that, um, Dominic and them choose to do that requires it. Another thing in the off-hours between Labor Day and Memorial Day of why we stuck with the eight AM was the miniature golf tournament had so many, um, so many entries in their, uh, previous year that they needed to start earlier. And so they were starting at eight AM to get all their golfers on the first round through before they started their second round at one o'clock in the afternoon. So we were looking at that as well for past experiences on our resolutions of why eight AM was a necessity. And so if the miniature golf tournament believes they can, and then is what's coming up probably soon, you know, even though the hours are a little different, but a lot of people tend to, you know, do five Ks and stuff in the morning. So if they were to do a point five K and wanted to start off early on a Saturday morning, once again, you'd have to have another resolution amending a two-hour shift in your ordinance.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from committee?
Mr. President.
Actually, I, go ahead, Mr. Seagrave.
Yes, we heard testimony in committee that one of the main drivers behind this was the police department, that they were becoming confused as to what days were and were not approved. I just wonder if there's anyone from the police department that could speak to that?
Eve, go ahead.
Chief, are you confused?
I take the fifth on that one. Uh, Mr. President, through you to, uh, Councilman Seagrave. I, I don't know if confusion, um, on our part, um, is necessary, the, the driver, but many of our officers that were working extra duty at these various events. Field of questions from patrons, is, is this okay? Um, we, we also dealt with the gentleman from the Albany about, about similar questions. And I think that overall, not necessarily specific to this particular ordinance, but overall, I think from a law enforcement perspective, when you have. when you have inconsistencies in ordinances, um, you're kind of setting yourself up for, you know, potential problems. If, you know, if you have a law, it should be in effect all the time, um, generally. That obviously is up to this governing body, if, if this particular one is, is worth that consistency. But from our perspective, consistent for our officers, consistent for the people we run into, uh, that they might or might not violate this is, um, a, a better approach from a law enforcement perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Roybal, question for the chief. Uh, chief, with regards to the, uh, open container ordinance that we've had from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and then all of the, other, uh, resolutions that we've done for events outside that timeframe, has, uh, this particular, uh, issue or ordinance, uh, allowing that open container, uh, presented any type of enforcement problem or abuse problem, uh, for the police department?
Mr. President, through you to Councilman White, no, not at all. Um, we, we still retain the ability to cite people for public intoxication if that became an issue. Um, so we feel now, we've always felt ever since the beginning of this discussion, that we had tools to deal with people that were abusing it or unruly, um, so it, it has not caused us any, any problems whatsoever.
Okay, further. Go ahead. We have somebody on Zoom? Jennifer?
We do have someone on Zoom, Ms. Danica.
Okay, go ahead, Danica.
Hi, good evening, council members. Uh, this is Danica Rosensky. I'm a downtown business owner at YO Music on Central Avenue between Seventeenth and Eighteenth, um, as well as a patron of downtown. Uh, I just wanted to make a comment from my personal experience this summer, uh, with the open container. I want to say that I, I am excited about the possibility of year round open container in the downtown district. This summer, I was able to take advantage of the, the open container rules during a Friday night, uh, when Fridays on the Plaza and Art Walk were happening. Uh, it allowed me and friends to stop at the Plaza for music, enjoy a beer, and then circulate to the Art Walk locations. Um, not waiting for that last friend to finish their beer or, uh, drink more than intended. Uh, it allowed us to stop there for music and then go to the Art Walk, and along the way, we were able to meet up with other friends, uh, we stopped into local businesses and shops, um, definitely supporting those small businesses. Uh, of course, we could have done that without beers, uh, but the fact that we were able to carry a beer with us along the way, got us circulating, which otherwise we probably just would have been hanging out at the Plaza the whole time. Um, and kind of circumvents the downtown businesses. We enjoyed having the open container available on Saturday downtown during the restaurant tasting event, uh, so thank you guys for that. Uh, it allowed extra circulation again, which encouraged stopping off at extra businesses that were open. Um, the restaurant owners that I've had a chance to speak with so far have said that they, um, were happy that they participated in that event, and, um, you know, we don't have anything directly to support that, having the open container helped the event, uh, at this time, but, um, it definitely made it fun for the friends that I talked to. Um, as a business owner, um, I own a small music shop, and so we don't have, you know, we don't sell alcohol or benefit from alcohol sales, but I do believe that this is a benefit to my business because it brings people downtown for events and, uh, increases that circulation around downtown and brings more awareness to the businesses that are located around the area. That was just my personal comment, uh, and as a business owner and downtown patron, thank you so much.
You. Dr. Aldrich has a question for you.
Danica, um, I'm just curious, do you allow food and beverage in your store? I've seen several stores downtown that have signs posted, um, no, uh, no beverages or food allowed in their store. So I'm just curious if you allow food and beverage in your store?
Uh, yeah, we don't have a sign on our door or anything, um, at, at my shop, uh, it's never been a problem. You know, we have people bringing their coffee or tea or whatever in with them. Um, we aren't actually really, you know, we're only open till five in the evening, so, you know, when a lot of these events and stuff are going on, I, you know, we're not necessarily open when people are circulating with their, their drinks, but for me, the benefit comes from people seeing, seeing our shop, walking past our shop, um, kind of getting used to that walkability that is available downtown.
Thank you. For the public comment.
Good evening, um, Mr. Chair, members of the council, Wendy Volk, 4000 Bent Avenue. I'm a downtown building owner at 222 East Eighteenth Street, the Waleka Volk Building. What I want to say is our family has owned downtown property for, I'm the fifth or sixth generation, uh, that is advocating and promoting, um, ownership of commercial buildings in that area. And I like seeing that at five o'clock, people might want to stay a little longer and linger and go from business to business. Waleka Volk is a mortgage company, they don't have containers, you'd go in there, I don't think, but I don't work for Waleka Volk, I'm just the building owner, they're my tenant. But I wanted to just say that I've never seen in my entire life so much good happening year round. It used to be 10 days out of the year, we would see, you know, a big, um, activity in turn, in terms of tourism, but now to see people wanting to go out, you know, year round, that's what we want to advocate and see our downtown continue to be our crown jewel and a reason to continue to stay and reinvest our dollars in our own community. I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hey, any further public comment? Hearing none. Comments from the committee?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Seagrave.
I'm just curious, I, I heard testimony that people walk from the Plaza with beer, what kind of a license does the Fridays on the Plaza utilize, and does it qualify for this? Can people walk from there legally with a beer? I don't know whose license they use or if they have their own.
They can't hear you. Um, Mr. President, through you to Mr. Seagrave, that, um, the depot museum pulls temporary permits for the Friday nights on the Plaza, and those, those include waiver of open container, so they can, they can go around with those beverages.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions from committee?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Labor.
Well, I think this last comment pointed out some of the, uh, anomalies and differences in this whole matter, where some establishments can.
Mr. Labor, could you get closer to your microphone, please?
Thank you. Um, yes, some establishments can participate and others can't. Um, I think that, uh, we're talking about the strip of the DDA on the south side, that's a different matter than the heart of downtown, and one of my concerns is uh, the general knowledge that the public has that would, that would be, uh, carrying around these open containers is the boundaries of the DDA district. Um, that is certainly something that is not well understood, and I'm not sure, I suppose you could go perhaps to the city website, um, I haven't checked that out, but, um, I don't think people really understand those 72 blocks and what those boundaries are. So that's a confusing factor here. But overall, I'd have to say that, uh, certainly, um, as a downtown property owner myself, um, yes, you bet, we're, we're doing a lot better. Whether that is directly related to open containers or not, um, remains, uh, undocumented in my opinion. And I think that certainly, uh, makes more sense to have, uh, such activities in the summer than it is, uh, in the winter. So I'll be speaking later on to some other, uh, items that are here on the agenda that I think point out some of the problems that, uh, or some of the, some of the reasons why, uh, this year round, uh, open container is not, it's not really such a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from committee? Mr. Johnson.
I guess, looking at, because people were asking, and like it was stated, um, with the overall DDA from going from 26 million to 27 million, but then we also got the graph that basically showed, um, the craft beverage locations and their increase. And so from committee, it was, you know, said, you know, well, if you, you know, who cares about the, you know, bar owners, we know they're going to make money, but they still have to make payroll, they still have to pay taxes, and this is still taxable revenue that's coming in the city, and just looking at the 2019 numbers compared to the 2022 numbers, you can see, you know, a solid increase just amongst those entities, and as we've seen, we're adding more to this core area when the Westies do get to open up, uh, their location, and then, you know, it opens up several, you know, other opportunities for, you know, that they take on, um, abandoned structures. Um, kind of listening to other debates on, um, that have come up in regards, you know, to other topics, when we talk about, you know, climate change and everything, and we hear about how it's getting warmer in the spring and warmer in the fall, and even warmer in the winter, then, you know, I, that's one of the reasons why I was a year round proponent from the very beginning, because I've ridden my bicycle downtown on a 70 degree day in January and wondered why I couldn't. I'm also smart enough to know that if the earth's flowing sideways and it's minus 14 degrees, I'm not going to be outside, you know, drinking a beer, I'm going to either be at home or I'm going to be inside where they have a heater on, or someplace that has a space heater, it's just, you know, common sense, and that's why when, um, the bartender at the Crown had asked me about the weather implementations, which was on, you know, our original as well as our substitute, that this gave the bartenders a, um, a little more teeth in denying patrons that they thought were going to be unruly, so that helps the police department that they know under city code, they can say that, you know, you've, you're cut off, the weather conditions are incremental, and you don't need to be out there, you know, whether it be 114 degrees in the heat, and you, they believe you're dehydrated, and you need to sit back and have some water, and you don't need a to-go glass, they can make that call, as well as if it's minus 14 degrees, they can make that call as well, that it's just not safe. And so I think this was really good in, uh, keeping our bartenders, um, having some flexibility, but with, as we've talked about with climate change on other things, it's getting warmer and warmer, and there's more and more days, as we've seen by the more and more events that seem to be happening in in the spring, fall and winter, and as Wendy stated, you know, we're no longer operating on a, a 10 day cycle of events taking place in Cheyenne.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from committee? Okay, hearing none, this is, uh, on second reading, so we'll be taking a voice vote on this. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh, aye. Those opposed?
No.
You see the hands and the nose? Okay. That's one, two, three, nine, six. So this, uh, ordinance is, is approved as amended?
Number 12, ordinance first reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from P Public to C B Community Business for land located south of Missile Drive, east of I-25.
This, uh, we're going to refer this to the Public Services Committee.
13, ordinance first reading, amending ordinance number 4447, approving and establishing water, revised water and sewer rates, tap and system development fees, administrative fees, service charges and penalties, and septic and commercial waste dump rates, as recommended by the Board of Public Utilities by replacing Board of Public Utilities Resolution Number 2022 dash zero three in section nine.
Okay, we're going to refer this to the Finance Committee.
We're 14, resolution authorizing the formation of the Wise Water Action Committee to develop a water conservation roadmap specific to Cheyenne and supported by city decision makers and community stakeholders, postponed from October 24th, 2022.
Mr. Cook.
Mr. President, the motion to adopt died due to lack of a second. Therefore, there is no recommendation from the Public Services Committee. However, um, for the sake of discussion, I move to adopt.
Do I have a second? Okay, this motion fails. But the resolution fails.
Number 15, resolution permitting the possession of open containers within the downtown development district boundaries, post Thanksgiving shopping and the Christmas parade to be held November 25th and 26th, 2022.
Mr. Cook.
Uh, Mr. President, we're, I think we're going to potentially have more, uh, conversation, uh, regarding alcohol. Mr. President, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt, and I so move.
Second.
Second, Mr. White. Public comment? Public comment?
Chairman, Council Dominic Bravo, CEO for Visit Cheyenne and DDA. Um, pretty much do it from what I said earlier, just kidding. Um, but the, I, I think the biggest thing is, many of these ones are ones that the council has seen before, so that we've had success in years past, uh, for Old West Holiday, uh, that whole time for Stop Small Saturday, uh, and also everything going on holiday wise has been successful, and you folks have, have seen this before, but just figured I can stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Bravo? That doesn't look like it, thank you. Okay, any further public comment? Public comment? Hearing none, any comments from, uh, committee?
Mr. President.
Seagrave.
I like doing open containers in this manner. It gives us, the governing body, an opportunity to pick and choose events, and, and quite honestly, we pick mostly events, we approve mostly events. We're going to have one a little bit later that I did oppose in committee. But this, this makes sense to me. It's during the holidays, it's for shopping, it's to bring people downtown. On a Monday, just having people walking around downtown because it's available doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And I don't think it takes a lot of our effort to approve this on a, on a item by item basis, so this particular event makes sense to me, I'm going to support it. Every day, 24/7, or, uh, 365 days a year does not make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from committee? Mr. Labor. Could you turn on your microphone?
Thank you. So, um, I would have to say that this particular, uh, resolution I have some real serious issues with. I believe that our Christmas parade is a family friendly event. Especially a family event, Christmas event, holiday event. And I don't see any need whatsoever for anyone to drink beer and wine at the Christmas parade. I really think that this rationale ties over to the entire rationale. That, uh, this is an unmixed blessing, and it really brings, uh, benefits to financial benefits, uh, businesses benefits, and certainly I recognize, uh, it brings benefits to the purveyors of alcohol. But I don't know what benefit it brings to those children at the Christmas parade. I don't think it brings any benefit to them. I think it's really something that, uh, when we look at the way that alcohol is treated in our community and in state law and in, uh, as we understand it, drinking in the bars and, and licensed establishments, that's one thing. Uh, drinking on the street during the Christmas parade, that's another, and that's why I'm opposed to, uh, this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions from committee? Dr. Aldridge.
Thank you, um, President Roybal. Um, I, I have some concerns with this particular event. I think I agree with, uh, Councilman Seagrave that, um, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to approve these individually. Um, and I don't know that there have been any that we haven't approved historically, but, um, this one I think is just concerning because it is a holiday, and I, I struggle with these, quite honestly, not because, I feel like we need to be, um, as Councilman Johnson has indicated previously, moral police. But I think that we spend a lot of time and energy on resolutions and grants and, um, doing things to counter the impact of addiction and, um, alcohol and, uh, supporting our public health folks, um, who are dealing with things like this, and, um, yet we continue to, um, in some ways really promote, um, this behavior, so I think that this is one where, because of the family nature of it, because it happens um, in the evening, because, you know, quite honestly, I'm sure this is going to pass tonight, I will be a no vote, and I'm going to be hoping that it will be very, very cold temperature. And I'm going to be hoping that it will be very, very cold temperatures so that people aren't inclined to stand outside and drink alcohol.
Yeah, thank you. Mister Johnson.
Actually, um, I think that there's probably going to be more violations of the open container law on this night specifically because I think more families are going to probably bring their hot toddies, their peppermint schnapps and hot chocolate and their cider and cinnamon schnapps and so, which is not legal under the city code, and they're going to bring it from home. So we'll probably have more violations that nobody's going to know about. So it'd be interesting to see what people bring in their Yetis, but I mean, really, I know it's a family event, but that's what I usually see when I go to the Christmas parade is most people are, you know, bringing their alcohol from home and doing their own mixed drinks.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from committee? Hearing done. Uh, the resolution, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
You see the nose? Mister Labor, doctor? So this open container exception is approved.
We're sixteen. Uh permitting the possession of open containers within the downtown development district boundaries for the Santa point five K to be held December third, twenty twenty two.
Okay, Mr. Cook.
Mister President, the motion to adopt failed. Therefore, there is no recommendation from the this this Finance Committee, but it's obviously the Public Services Committee. Um, however, for the sake of discussion, I move to adopt.
Second. A second for Mister Johnson. Okay, any publicly or any comment from the public?
I guess I could. The Chairman and Council Dominic Bravo, CEO, President for DDA and Visit Cheyenne. Um. This one is a little bit different than the others, although this one has been approved as well. Uh, this is a shortened window, uh so it's for a few hours specifically since it's like a point five K. So it's during a a specific event for the running of the Santas. Just a really quick fun event similar to what other communities have and uh that's basically it. I can answer any questions.
Mister President. Actually, this is for one hour. And it, and I guess I need, I need to hear from you that it's so important to the businesses that we be allowed to have alcohol in public for one hour. That we're all going to go through this effort. Cause I voted this down. Uh, I, I just can't imagine that one hour is going to make a big difference to Monica and and uh the other folks that have testified already. So convince me.
Mister Bravo.
Chairman, I'll do my best. Um, so last year, um, it's just turned into a big competition. So the goal is, is uh the beverages are given out before the race and you attempt to make your way to the end of the race in a short amount of time. So um somewhat of a fun, but jokey event that takes place in a condensed amount of time. So the reasoning for how events everyone in the downtown, yeah, it might only be an hour, but once we get folks down there, then the, the goal is that they'll be hanging around, doing other stuff, shopping, eating all of the stuff that you would do when you come down specifically to an event, but much like a marathon. It's just it happens to be running the Santas with uh beverages and costumes. Basically it.
Any further follow ups? Hey, any further questions from committee?
Yeah, when you're ready.
Mister Johnson, um, where was the route? I was not including our package. Do you guys have a route map of where this is actually taking place? Cause it was kind of vague. Where it was.
I'd have to scan over to to Haley. I'm, I thought it was from Railspur to the depot, but yeah, Fifteen Streets. That's what I thought. So Railspur to the the depot.
Any questions from committee? Thank you. For the public comment. If you'll push the green button.
Thank you, Council. Anthony Ortiz, building owner, business owner downtown in the Del- Downtown Development Authority District. Um, I just really support everything that's going on with the open containers as far as Santa five K, everything else in our seventy four block DDA district. I think everywhere deserves to have this. Um. I've been a building owner for the last three years down there and I've seen a massive difference as far as foot traffic, people wanting to be downtown. Um, it's great to drive down to check on my office on a Saturday afternoon and there is nowhere to park because there's everybody downtown having a great time. Um, things like this Santa five K. Yeah, it may only be an hour, but that's what's bringing this young demographic downtown to spend their money. So if we can appease them, that just is going to invite them downtown more and to spend more and more money instead of saying, we don't want you down here because X, Y and Z. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Ortiz.
Mister President, we have Danita would like to speak again.
Okay, Danika, go ahead.
Hi, Council. Thanks for listening to me again. Um, I just wanted to um address what uh Councilman Seagrave mentioned about having it only be one hour event. Um. I think these kind of small one hour, two hour events that the DDA and other businesses um have been trying to put together. You know, they really attract people downtown. They get the word out, they remind people to get, come downtown. And I think that the, having something like the open container encourages people to stay and linger, um especially if it's explained and marketed um properly to the public as far as what those, what those boundaries look like, what the rules are, um who's, you know, where you can legally purchase alcohol. Um, I think those things are all important and really just we're, we're always talking uh with the Downtown Business Association. Um. You know, how do we keep people downtown once we, once they're down here? And I think again, this is just one of those things that will really help that. Thank you.
There's a public comment.
Wendy, Wendy Volk again, uh Chairman through you to the members of council. I just wanted to say, if you haven't seen this Santa run, it's a hoot. And it is a fast run and it might be chilly as I'll get. You can have a cocktail or not cheering them on, but then you go inside and have a nice breakfast or lunch at one of the dining establishments. So it's, it's sort of a a carrot that teases people to go inside, go have breakfast after that and and bring your family and sit down and have waffles and pancakes someplace. Um, but it really, it is, it is silly. It's funny uh to watch and to cheer on your loved ones and participate in it. But more importantly, then you have the segue to go in in a sport, not only, you know, it doesn't have to be for alcohol. You go into and have a nice breakfast with your loved ones and and giggle and and laugh about what you just participated in. So just wanted to support that as a member of the public.
Thank you. Any further comment for the public? For the comment? Hearing that, any further comments from committee? Committee? Okay, this is resolution, this will be a voice vote. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Yes, see the nose? Mister Seagraves and Mister Labor. Okay, this uh open container exemption is approved.
Number seventeen resolution permitting the possession of open containers within the downtown development district boundaries for New Year's Eve on December thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Mister Cook.
Mister President, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt and I so move.
Second.
Second from Mister White. Okay, any comments or questions from the public? Comments or questions?
Wendy Volk again. Thank you, Mister Chair. I just wanted to say the ball drop has really turned into an amazing event. And I remember when Glenn Garrett was walking down the street in our neighborhood and said, hey, I'm thinking about doing a ball drop and I'm going to get on to get someone to get on top of the Heinz building and take a beach ball and put a flashlight in it and do a ball drop. And I said, that will be the most anticlimactic ball drop for New Year's Eve. We have to really do it upright. Let's get that crane that's downtown and let's, let's figure out doing a ball drop like New Year's Eve. And that's what continues to be building upon a, a silly idea to turned into an amazing idea. And I love that they have, you know, they had a children's ball drop and then they have a midnight one for this more, you know, adult focused. But I do think it would be nice to be able to raise a glass of cheer outdoors rather than sitting inside a bar and trying to raise a glass. The whole purpose was to do it just like New York City's ball drop. So I just wanted to say I'm proud of what this event has become and I would like to see that for this limited, you know, adult function late at night that we do it responsibly and be able to raise a glass of cheer outside, not just inside.
Thank you. Okay, any further public comment? Public comment? Hearing that, any comments, questions from committee? Mister Labor.
Thank you, Mister President. I think the point is that uh it's, and maybe I can get this some interpretation here. Um, so I believe that under the current ordinance and the ordinance that we're considering with the substitute, um you're not talking about raising a glass out on the street at midnight or near to midnight. Doesn't that uh authorization end at ten o'clock?
I would say yes. And I think that if we'd add, my thought would be that if uh we're going to do it next year, we'll have to come in and do it by resolution again.
Well, Mister President, I think that my point is, and certainly we heard it uh earlier in this discussion of a previous item. So oh, uh I was incorrect. Mister uh Seagrave is correcting me. So it does go to two o'clock. Um, I uh apologize. I should have read that more thoroughly. But nevertheless, I do have my concern that as was mentioned earlier. Um, you have people believing that they can drink on the street and bringing schnapps or warming beverages to the uh Christmas parade. I just don't see that a family friendly event or particularly in this case, the uh New Year's Eve ball drop. I know that the police department makes special effort on New Year's Eve to try to see that uh we don't have intoxication and DUIs and certainly it is a party atmosphere, but I think that it's inappropriate. And I think that when we start going down this road, we see we're going to see more and more of individuals perhaps who uh aren't drinking beer or wine or drinking other liquors in those open containers. And these uh occasions uh probably uh and certainly in this case, I believe would be now that I've been corrected. Um, that earlier first first night activity for children would be one that where people could drink there as well. So um, those are my reasons for voting no. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments or questions from committee?
Mister President.
Mister Seagrave.
Very briefly, this makes, this is another event that makes sense to me. It's going to be adults primarily in the evening prior to midnight. And it's not a lot of effort on our part to do a special waiver for it. Uh versus a twelve months, three hundred sixty five days. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from committee? Okay, hearing done. This is a resolution, so it will be a voice vote. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Yes, see the nose? The no? Yeah, Mister Labor, it's no. So the open container uh exemption is approved.
Number eighteen resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to sign a final plot for High Plains Business Park, a plot of a portion of sections twenty two, I'm sorry, twenty three and twenty four. Township thirteen north, range sixty seven west and section nineteen township thirteen north, range sixty six west of the sixth PM, Warrimah County, Wyoming, located between I twenty five and South Greeley Highway, South of College Drive.
Okay, Mister Cook.
Mister President, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt and I so move.
Okay, I have a sec. Do I have a second? Second by Doctor Ray. Okay, are there any comments or questions from the com- uh public? Comments or questions? Okay, hearing that, any comments or questions from committee? Comments or questions? Doctor Ray. You want to turn your mic on? Thank you.
The reason it was pulled off consent was because it had to come after the annexation and if it went through on consent, it would not, it would be improper order.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions? This is a resolution. So again, this is going to be a voice vote. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is the, the final plat is approved. Oh wait. You open a tip. No, the final plat is approved, sorry.
Number nineteen resolution authorizing submission of an application to the Wyoming Water Development Commission for grant funding for the Borey Well Field Exemption Project in the amount of seven million thirty five thousand dollars and authorizing the Director of the Board of Public Utilities to execute the application and all related documents.
Okay, Mister White.
Mister Mayor, the motion to adopt died to the lack of emotion. Therefore, there is no recommendation from the Finance Committee. However, for the sake of discussion, I move to adopt.
Seconded. Mister Labor, okay? Do I have public comment?
Yes, good evening, Mister Chair. Uh, Councilmembers Brad Brooks, Director for City Cheyenne Board of Public Utilities. Uh, make this real quick. Basically, I'd love to be here before you requesting you to approve this, but we were informed at a meeting last week and the, we went to Casper with the Water Development Commission that they are not recommending funding of this project. So I did bring it before uh the Finance Committee meeting to basically just suggest we do not need to proceed any further forward with this. So just information. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Any questions for Director Brooks?
Mister President.
Mister Labor.
So uh, in other words, we should vote this motion down. Is that what you're saying?
That is correct. Thank you.
Doctor Aldridge, you have a question? Okay. Um, okay, uh, thank you. Any uh comments or questions from committee? Comments or questions? Again, since this is a resolution, it's going to be a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay, this uh, the resolution fails.
Number twenty resolution certifying the Kiwanis East Park Greenway Underpass and Drainage Plan at the Union Pacific Railroad.
Okay, Mister Cook.
Mister President, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt and I so move.
Second, Mister Seagrave. Hey, any public comment? Public comment? Okay, comments from committee?
Mister Chairman, Mister President.
Mister Labor.
Um, I, this caused a lot of discussion, a lot of discussion our committee, and I think that uh its importance uh is really something that uh has been an issue and a concern for many, many years. And certainly that uh is heightened by uh the fact that now the Kiwanis Park is going to be going into that area and we have growth and development uh on both sides of the railroad track that'll be affected by this. But I think that possibly some of the misunderstanding is uh that this is basically about the Greenway Underpass. Well, the Greenway Underpass is a real important part of this whole matter, but uh not nearly as important as the drainage considerations and the series of events that hopefully will lead us to a resolution of this problem. I see that uh Dean McDonald is here. Uh, Mister President, I wonder if he could speak to uh the, those concerns that were raised in the committee.
McDonald?
Mister President, members of the council, um Councilman Labor, and thank you for the opportunity. And uh let me just preface my remarks by saying I, I I probably could have been more clear in the Public Services Committee last week, so I do apologize for that. Um, but again, thank you for the opportunity um to be a little bit more clear tonight. And I think I've got three main points that I'd like to bring to Council's attention. Uh, first point being that um first and foremost, the MPO study before you tonight um emphasized the drainage component first and foremost. Um, the Greenway path, which is thirty five percent design at this level, is completely predicated on the proposed drainage solutions. So in other words, um it, it didn't come before the drainage, drainage came first. And the uh, the Greenway design is, is basically following the berms that are proposed and the uh actual drainage solution. That's the first point I wanted to make. This is really a This is really a drainage study with a Greenway component added to it. Um, I would like to also point out that there is now a federal initiative to proactively protect critical transportation infrastructure. And I can't imagine a more critical piece of transportation infrastructure in our community than the mainline tracks of the Union Pacific Railroad that comes through our community from east to west. So now I want to get to the heart of what I could have been more clear on last week, and that is the Union Pacific Railroad culvert only has a 10-year capacity currently. That's all it can handle in terms of rainfall runoff events. But you have to take that into the context of when it was built, which was 1903. And back in 1903, when that culvert and that embankment was placed for the Union Pacific Mainline Tracks, the Dry Creek Drainage Basin was almost 100% unimproved. It was agricultural, it was rural. The capacity of that culvert at the time that they built it was more than enough to handle any drainage coming down Dry Creek. Now, in the decades that have followed, we have nearly completely urbanized the Dry Creek Drainage Basin within the corporate limits of Cheyenne. So the water that gets impounded up against this embankment of the Union Pacific is really a city problem. We have basically contributed that significant increase in runoff to the Union Pacific Railroad. And every drop of water that occurs in the basin upstream of that Union Pacific Crossing has to go through that 1903 culvert, which cannot handle it 2022. Now, there's a couple of points, salient points to keep in mind as to why this is more of a city, urgent city problem than it is a Union Pacific problem. And that is, the embankment was never designed to hold back water. It's not a dam. So any impalement of water that lasts for 24 hours or more, you're going to start to see an ever more significant breach hazard. And if we had a catastrophic breach of that embankment, we are going to have a huge problem downstream with a lot of property damage in the Leeds Business Park, life safety hazards occurring on Camp Stoll and also on I-80. This is a huge problem that basically the city developed, if you will, because of the urbanization of that basin, which is common in a lot of communities. But we have a serious hazard that we should appropriately address because of the critical life safety hazards downstream in the case of a breach and the significant property damages that we would see in the Leeds Business Park. Now, to the railroad, I think we have an opportunity here because this does provide a significant benefit to the railroad as well. If we were to address this problem, they don't want to have a breach of their mainline tracks in any, in any way. And so if we were to approach the railroad in that fashion, this would not, in my opinion, be considered by the railroad as another Cheyenne issue. We'd actually be saying, hey, UP, we'd like to help you out. And in the process of helping them out, if we can get a Greenway pass through their culvert, that would be an added bonus. But that's not the underlying reason why we would approach the railroad for this issue. This really is a significant life safety hazard that the city could be addressing. And we've addressed issues like this in the past with other major flood control projects. This one would be high on the overall priority ranking of flood control projects because of the life safety issue downstream and the significant property damages. And again, I apologize for not being more clear on that last week, but that's what's driving this. Greenway path would be an added bonus. I think it's potentially in the railroad's best interest to embrace this as it helps them, not the Greenway pass, but the flood control portion of this. And I think to the extent that the railroad comes on board, which I believe they would be willing to do, and actually co-sponsor and partner with the city on funding that is now available through the federal government, that would make those grant applications that much more competitive. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from committee?
Mr. President.
Mr. Seagraves.
During the committee last week, we had a lot of, as Councilman Labor said, we had a lot of discussion. The primary beneficiary, I believe, Mr. McDonald, in this project is the UP Railroad. Or is that not correct?
Uh, through you, Mr. President. I would say the primary beneficiary on this would be the traveling public and the downstream properties in the Leeds Business Park. UP Railroad stands to benefit quite significantly as well. But again, we're not doing it for the railroad. We're doing it because of the life safety hazards and the significant potential for property damages. That's, that's what's driving this. The railroad gets a benefit just because we need to do it. But I would argue that they are not the primary beneficiary.
And I think that's the difference in what we heard last week. But anyway, Mr. McDonald, you're doing a study of the entire Dry Creek. Can you, can you tell us what the city has done over the years as far as mitigation for stormwater up and down the Dry Creek?
Uh, Mr. President, through you. Up until 2004, 2005 timeframe, when we came out with the proposal for the Dry Creek Sheridan Reach Flood Control Project, uh, we really didn't do a whole lot other than improved crossings that were damaged in the 85 event. I think we eliminated one of the crossings in the middle third of the basin. Uh, in terms of development since 2005, uh, the city has had a, an additional criteria, an additional requirement, if you will, um, in addition to the UDC for those properties within the Dry Creek Basin upstream of the railroad that are developing. And we've been holding those properties to the 20-year historic discharge. So they've got to build bigger detention features, they've got to hold back more water. But that truly is a drop in a bucket when you look at the regional impact of everything that's contributing flow to the basin. The only way that you can develop a truly genuine solution is with regional detention. The only one that we've done so far is the Sheridan Reach Flood Control. That's a really good project, but its focus is on the Sheridan Reach. And it's completely dampened out by the time you get to US 20. And now with the update to the master plan effort that we're doing currently, we're looking at additional storage upstream of the railroad, which we think we can generate, which will have a huge impact on clamping down the peak discharge that gets to East Persian Boulevard, and that's what you need to do. With that in mind, we can reduce the total cost of this study. And as I pointed out last week, it's ultra-conservative. It's ultra-conservative purposely because we haven't talked with the railroad yet. So in conjunction with discussions with the railroad and what we think we can accomplish with added storage upstream, it wouldn't surprise me if the total cost comes in about five or six million.
Any further follow-ups?
Mr. President, I was, I was trying to make the point that it seems like every subdivision that we look at and that we approve, there are requirements that that subdivision detain the water on their property, or it's usually dedicated to the city, our property. And I believe we had testimony early, not last week, but several months ago, that there are over 400 detention ponds in the, in the city that we are trying to maintain. So it seems to me like the city has done a pretty, I don't know if it's a good job or not, but we've done, we've had a significant effort to try to maintain uh, the runoff as much as possible. Thank you.
Dr. Re.
Mr. President, there were, there were two reasons, primary reasons, why I and some of the other council members at the time pushed to get this piece of property on the Six Penny Ballot. First one was just to have a nice, large city regional park, um, which was one of the priorities for our Parks and Rec Department at the time and one of the fastest-growing areas of the city. But the other primary reason, and I think Gene touched on it a little bit, was that because of all the water that backs up at that embankment, and that embankment wasn't, as he said, is not a dam, the city is requiring 50% extra water detention upstream from that area, which means the entire Dry Creek Basin is required to have additional 50% of detention. That adds to developers' costs. If we can deal, if we can deal with the problem, the drainage problem in that area, which was again, one of the goals in buying that piece of property, was, and then upstream from there, if we can reduce the detention requirements, it should reduce costs to developers. And that's one of the biggest factors in our lack of affordable housing. And it's just another argument to, to be moving forward with this plan. So I would just wanted to point that out to my colleagues.
Any further questions for Mr. McDonald?
Mr. President.
Press bell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. McDonald. And the MPO plan, it talks about that if we use that 1903 structure for a pedestrian, that UP RR requires more culverts to be installed underneath their tracks. Wouldn't that alleviate some of the concerns you have with additional culverts?
Mr. President, through you. Again, we did not approach this from the perspective of making that culvert the main reason why we were doing this. Uh, and in fact, with, with the, um, the H and H design that we've put forward, we've actually isolated that culvert hydraulically all the way through the 500-year event, which is a fancy way of saying it'll never see any water. Now, the reason we did that is because, again, we have not had a discussion with the railroad yet. The only way that you can solve this problem, irregardless of whether you're using the existing culvert or not using it, is by putting additional pipes underneath that embankment, and you'll need quite a few. So best-case scenario, even if you were going to use the existing culvert as a hydraulic structure only, you'd still be looking at at least four, maybe five additional pipes. Um, so again, the, the existing culvert did not enter into the overall hydraulic design. The other thing I would point out, Mr. President, is that there is a significant difference technically between micro storage and regional storage. Oh, yes, the city is doing, I would say, a very diligent job, responsible job with how they're handling drainage management within that basin. The technical problem with doing that is that you're never going to get a regional solution with individual development storage. It's not possible. Um, number one, it's, it's not choreographed, if you will. We're not basing these in any logical pattern. We're basing them on when development comes in. And there's a philosophical point here too, that it might be somewhat moot, but in some respects, we're trying to put the cost on the developer. But the real solution here is to have more regional storage. And another technical problem that you have when you just count on the individual storages from development is that sometimes you actually increase the peak. You don't decrease it on a regional basis because of timing. So we have a peak discharge coming down the creek. We've got peak discharges occurring on every one of these parcels within the drainage basin. All of these peak discharges are entering the creek at different times. We're now attenuating them on developments. Sometimes it improves it, sometimes it doesn't. So the peak discharge in the creek itself to the UP Railroad is about an hour, hour and a half. If your peaks are coming in within that timeframe or shortly after that, you're actually increasing the amount of impalement that's occurring at the railroad crossing. So regional detention is always the best answer, but there's a cost to that. It's not cheap, and you need land to do it. Um, and it's, it's expensive.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from Mr. McDonald? Okay, thank you. Any further public comment? Public comment? Any comments or questions from committee?
Mr. President.
Press bell.
Just based on what I know is from getting the railroad to that you have at least one culvert is difficult at best, but to get multiple culverts for one project is going to be nearly impossible. Like, we might have to look at an alternate route. I mean, Chris, the overpass is about 800 feet away from this location, relieve. So we already have an overpass that could add Greenway cheaper than what this is going to be, but it still gets up to the same place we want to in the end. But I, I do admit that going through that culvert, either on a bike or pedestrian, is aesthetically pleasing to whoever is using it. It's, it really is cool. Uh, so I guess we have more discussions going forward on this.
Thank you. Any further questions, Mr. Labor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think that what I'm referring to is probably before Mr. McDonald's time here, but certainly not before some of us that are old timers remember. And that was the results of the 1985 flood on the Henderson Ditch Drainage ditch and its outlet there in that detention area immediately to the east of College Drive and developed open space. And basically what happened there was we had several efforts upstream. Uh, certainly, uh, there immediately north of Lincoln Way at the Animal Hospital and across the street from a variety of businesses there. But more importantly, there were several, I'm not sure, a couple, maybe. There were drainage culverts or drainage pipes placed under the UP Railroad there to relieve that entire matter. So this has happened before, and it can be done. And it is, uh, to me, the natural responsibility of us to take a look at these things before we have devastating events like the 85 flood and see what we can do ahead of time to do the kind of detention and Greenway connection and benefit to the Kiwanis Park that is conceived of in this resolution. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from committee? Questions or comments? Hearing none, this is again, a resolution, so we're going to do a voice vote. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the drainage plan is certified.
Next item is number 24A on page four. Professional services agreement between the City of Cheyenne and Paladin Technologies, Inc. for the camera system and NVR system upgrades at the Cheyenne Public Safety Center.
Mr. White.
Mr. President, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve in an amount not to exceed $53,993.81, and I so move.
Seconded with Mr. Escobal. Public comment?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Joel Hickerson, I'm a lieutenant with the Cheyenne Police Department. This agreement is an update between the City of Cheyenne and Paladin Technologies to transition our current in-house interview recording system as well as other cameras, including our booking area and lobby area. The current system was built on what was already a superannuated, excuse me, superannuated setup. It was on DVR systems that were pulled from the old police department at 2020 Capitol Avenue. And we were hoping to use a cost savings measure in integrating that into a new building. However, those DVRs are used primarily for analog cameras, which have limited pixelation abilities, limited limited sharpness and resolution on the microphone recording abilities as well. So one of the big impacts we're having in the building right now is if you were to listen to the audio recordings and view the video recordings in our lobby, in our booking area, and in a couple of our interview rooms, it's inaudible. And it's very difficult to see in interviews where it's particularly important, body language, people's movements, when people are speaking because of the ventilation systems. You have people making admissions to incidents or making very important disclosures in these interviews, and they simply cannot be heard. So this is to tackle and improve that issue. Additionally, those DVRs, because of their size, we are constantly at a point where we are crashing that system. And we are asking to update that to a thirty two gigabyte sys, I'm sorry, thirty two terabyte system, which is expandable to sixty four terabytes, which will help us to stay on top of this moving forward in the future. So we're not having to tackle this again in the next five to ten years. Lastly, I want to stress that this funding is already allocated for through the previously approved buildout of the Cheyenne Public Safety Center.
Thank you. Anybody on committee have any questions for the lieutenant? Questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, any further public comment? Public comment? Hearing none, any comments or questions from committee?
Mr. Johnson. The reason I was a no in committee on this is because we didn't take the extended warranty. And so from what Joel provided at committee, we were going just off the year warranty, I believe is what he said, on just the equipment.
Okay. No. Okay, any further comments or questions?
Guess what my question is, Mr. President? And I don't know if I need the lieutenant up here or not, but I'm just, I'm wondering, I know he said primarily he was here to talk about the upgrade in the technology, but he also mentioned his comments, the ventilation system and so forth in the building. So that seems to sound like maybe more of a, of a design type of an issue, so. But I'm, I'm hoping, and, and you seem to be pretty confident that, that this will, this upgrade in technology will be helpful, but are there other things that can be done, Lieutenant, to maybe mitigate some of those ventilational noises, sounds, disruptions?
Mr. President, through you. Yeah, that's a good, good question, Councilman Cook. The air ventilation system there is very, very active for, for many reasons. It was unforeseen at the time by the company that did the original install, that there would be so much audiophonic impedance, that we would have so many issues with getting a clear audio signal or getting clear microphone recordings of people in those interview rooms or in those lobby or booking areas. That was, I guess it was remiss of us not to have better testing at that time. I'm not sure that any of us had had real experience with that at the time. We were trusting in our tech builder at the time to see that through. We have since found that that has become an issue. We can't change the HVAC systems. They are very effective and, and for a reason. The primary builders, when they created this, wanted to make sure ventilation, heating, clean air, stuff like that was the priority. This system that we currently have was kind of brought in as an afterthought. What we ended up doing is working with Paladin Technologies, as well as, give me a moment to bring up the name of the company. A Vigilon, and they actually specialize in these systems for law enforcement agencies. This apparently is not an uncommon problem. And with that in mind, A Vigilon came in and actually did audio and microphone testing. And then we were able to view that live and then do playback, and that it was very, very impressive with these new microphone systems, exactly how much stands out and how much you can hear. You can, you know, we, we have troubles even in here, where you have microphones directly in front of you. These microphones sometimes are fifteen, twenty feet away from people, and you can hear them whispering. It's very impressive. So the, the HVAC issue that was causing this previously, as you guys know, with your iPhones and stuff, you have sound elimination for that background noise. This does the same thing.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that follow up on that.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, any further questions from committee? No? Okay. This will be voiced also, since it's a lease contract and legal, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Yes, you know? Sue Johnson's a no. So the professional services agreement is approved.
Twenty four B memorandum of understanding between the City of Cheyenne and Laramie County Community College to provide commercial driver's license, your truck training to city employees.
White.
Mr. President, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve, and I so move. Mr. President, I move to amend by substitute dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty two.
Okay, second. Would you mind explaining the amendment?
Yes, there. Excuse me, there was some amended language, I believe. Stephanie, if you could direct, I think it was section five. Five I, and there was some additional language that was proposed by Dr. Aldridge there to allow for training, training on weekends, or training that would not be provided on holidays that are observed by L triple C or weekends.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, any public comment on this? Public comment? Hearing none, any comment from committee? Dr. Aldridge.
Yes, President Rebel. The, the amendments that were made on this were actually included for B, which in basically L triple C, between the time the agreement had been written and the time they brought it to us, they had changed how they paced or what types of, how they had modularized their training. And so for B, allow, it basically combined that to reflect that correction so that it's accurate in how they're delivering their coursework now. And then in the five I section, originally, they were only going to offer this training between eight and five, Monday through Friday. This added the opportunity for us to have employees who might be interested in taking this training be able to take it in an evening format or a weekend format. So it gave us more flexibility in this agreement.
Thank you. So any public, any comments from the public, comments or questions? Any further comments or questions from committee? Hearing none, all those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, then we're on the amendment, on the substitute, so. Haven't done this in a while. So that was on the substitute, and were there any nos? Mr. Johnson's a no. Now we're back on the main motion. So again, any questions or comments from committee? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the memorandum of understanding signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Mr. Johnson's a no. The M O U is approved as amended.
Next item is twenty four D cooperative agreement between the City of Cheyenne and Wyoming Department of Transportation for twenty twenty three epoxy pavement marking.
Swate.
Mr. President, this item was reviewed under other items for the agenda at the November seventh, twenty twenty two Finance Committee meeting. Therefore, provisions of Title Two of City Code have been met. Mr. President, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve in an amount not to exceed one hundred thirty nine thousand six hundred eleven dollars, and I so move.
Second, my Mr. Johnson. Okay. Any public comments? Public comment on epoxy permanent marking or pavement marking? Okay, any comments or questions for the committee? Comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The cooperative agreement is approved.
Next item is twenty six A on page six. Voucher report.
Anyone have any comments or questions from the public about vouchers? Comments or questions? Anybody on committee have a comment or question about vouchers? Okay, hearing none, next item.
Twenty six B announcement of a public hearing to be held November twenty eighth, twenty twenty two at six P M in City Council Chambers, twenty one oh one O'Neil Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and the electronic conference meeting to determine whether compliance of annexation conditions required by Wyoming Statute fifteen dash one dash four oh two exists for about point thirty six acres of land at forty six twelve Van Buren Avenue, Laramie County, Wyoming, located west of Van Buren Avenue, north of Delrange Boulevard. Twenty six C announcement of a public hearing to be held November twenty eighth, twenty twenty two at six P M in City Council Chambers, twenty one oh one O'Neil Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and the electronic conference meeting for transfer of ownership of retail liquor license application filed with the City Clerk's Office for On Diamo three oh seven LLC, doing business as On Diamo three oh seven, eighteen oh eight O'Neil Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, license currently held by Poor Richards, doing business as Poor Richards, other business.
Hey, any other business from the public? Thanks for sitting through.
Mr. President, City Council members. My name is John Taylor. I live in a hundred East Third Avenue for forty four years. In that time, I personally had six cars totaled on Central Avenue. Drunks, speeding, whatever. I have attempted many times through the police chiefs and mayors, past and present, calling for enforcement of a speed limit to no avail. Two children have been hit by cars attempting to cross Central to go to or from school the latest just last week. It's time for this to stop. I have a some more here. I put together a timeline of requests for speeding enforcement and crosswalks on Central and Warren Avenue. Nine years ago, I wrote in a newspaper article to the police chief, Ozak, after fatality at the blood bank on Warren Avenue. Asked him for speeding enforcement, I got no response. I don't know if I need to read the article, but it's from thirteen years ago. It was published in the city newspaper. With the new mayor and police chief, I thought it would be time to try again. By email on March thirty first of twenty twenty one, wrote to Mayor Collins and Police Chief Francisco. And I, and quote, in forty years, I've seen two fatalities by car accidents and school kids hit by cars darting across Central to go back and forth to school, end quote. As for now retired Captain Mitch Maxwell, six thousand cars a day go down Central. I have told them in, in emails, the prime time for the the Fast and Furious Cars Club, they go between eight and ten every Friday and Saturday night all summer long, going seventy mile an hour in tight formation, followed by the Rice Rocket motorcycles and the Truck Club. On June twenty first, twenty one, an email, I asked mayor and chief for some speed enforcement. On eight eleven twenty two, in an email of the mayor Collins and chief, warning of school startup with no speed enforcement, the kids running just across Central. I stated it's an accident waiting to happen. On eight nineteen, I got a dismissive response from Mayor Collins. Quote, we are doing the best we can with the resources available, end quote. On ten ten, I wrote emails to Mayor Collins informing him how big a difference police speed box had made, but thanks to Wyoming Rep. Bill Henderson for making the call to the police chief to get it done. Then, a week later, a Miller student is hit by, on Central at Second Avenue. If there had been no speed box at that time, it would have been much worse. This past summer, a car hit a tree at thirty seven hundred Warren and Fourth Avenue. Besides residents. On Warren, car left street on First Avenue and struck fence at thirty four twenty two Warren and Second Avenue. This is a Croc residence. And a resident at a hundred East Second Avenue, Mr. Hadlip Hadaway, Second Avenue and Warren, put large boulders in his front yard for protection after his tree had been hit by a speeding car. I've had a petition signed by a hundred and twenty five residents, all in this area, with the help of the P T A from Demming Miller and Shannon Somerset. All I, all I have talked to have expressed their concern for speed enforcement with the addition of crosswalks. If we had more resources, quote, then the city should have been hiring more officers and paying them more a priority, or whatever needs to be done to correct this issue. The city engineer, I don't know if he's here, but to blow traffic perhaps maybe at a light at Eighth Avenue can be used to stop traffic more often. Right now, the traffic goes down fifty mile an hour down Central along Alliance Park and Airport. And if the light is green, they continue down Central at that speed, past Eighth, all the way down to Persia. We need a flashing thirty mile per hour speed limit sign. The only ones that we have now are at the blood bank, and then crosswalk signs in advance of flashing crosswalk on Second Avenue. The white signs needed, as for state codes, two one include two point three advanced crossing, two point four arrow at crossing, two point eight rectangular rapid flash beacon, and or a three eleven, three dot eleven, pedestrian red hybrid beacon. I hope this city council does their job for which they were elected and make their priority or any other incidents occur. Thank you for your time. I don't know if I need any questions.
Any questions for?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further public comment? You will, actually, Stephanie, you want to take that? Yeah, give it to Stephanie.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Madeline Martinez. Members of the board, councilmen, I'm the mother of the child who was hit a month ago. I'm going to try to really get through this. We were really lucky. He walked away from it, really. It could have been a lot worse. But receiving that phone call just a year, not even a year after we had that tragic accident that happened over in the Miller area, that is the most devastating phone call you could ever receive as a parent. And there are kids that walk to and from school on that road every day, twice a day, and are crossing those roads. And the amount of traffic that is speeding, that doesn't speak you, that are completely unaware of how fast they shouldn't be going and what is in that area. My kid was hit on Second Avenue in Central, walking home from school with a friend, and it really comes right off of, these kids walk down Second Avenue because it comes right off of that crosswalk on Evans, all the way down through the neighborhoods for them to get home. So I really, really hope that if anything positive can come out of this, it's that our students are safe and we get somewhere with that. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you. I'm sorry about what happened to your son. Any further public comment? Public comment? Any comment from committee? Mr. Labor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As was pointed out here, this is a very longstanding problem. I've heard about it, I've discussed it with the people involved, going back years and years. And actually, what we see happening, and I'm sure we've all experienced this, that our traffic is moving faster and reckless driving is on the increase. As a matter of fact, I was almost hit twice today, within about an hour on Bent and on Yellowstone with people driving extremely recklessly. So this isn't just this situation. This is other situations in our community, and I want to commend the actions that have been taken. I know that Wyoming Department of Transportation has granted I know that, uh, Wyoming Department of Transportation has granted funds. To the MPO for a update of our safe routes to school system. And that'll be coming underway, uh, now, but it obviously will be some time and more comprehensive. Also, there were two, uh, overhead hawk systems which are similar to the one across Yellowstone. At Davis School that'll be going in at McCormick and at, uh, Bag School there on East Pershing. So. I don't wanna, uh, confuse anyone that we don't understand and appreciate, uh, what's going on. This is a. Community-wide problem, but this particular problem is really unique. So you have Demming School on one side of Central and Warren. And Miller School on the other side. Those children are constantly going to school, back and forth, willy-nilly. Although, uh, the schools certainly, and the parents, uh, some, some parents take their kids to school, uh. Themselves because of their concerns. Some of them walk their kids to school because of those concerns. And others, uh, the children, uh, find their own way across a street that has a thirty mile speed limit. That is not observed. Um, I can tell you, and I hope when we drive up and down that street ourselves. We take a look at our speedometer when we're getting down there to fourth and third and second. And see if we're doing thirty miles an hour because the other people certainly aren't. And that was the case with this. Unfortunate incident that very easily could have been a tragedy. Because, uh, the child was, uh, motioned to come across the street, uh, the car stopped. Stepped out and the vehicle behind that one that stopped, um, to let the boy walk across the street. Came around, didn't see him and hit him. And that's, uh, passing on the right, big problem. So I do wanna note that, uh, this is complicated and important. That we all understand that Central and Warren are also state highways as well as city streets. So. The Wyoming Department of Transportation has a real role here. And so I've talked to, uh, Taylor McCourt, who is the, uh, district traffic engineer. About this matter, he referred us to the information that was brought up earlier about what possible steps can be taken. Uh, to do what we all believe is the appropriate action, at least. Crosswalks with the flashers at Second Avenue, which would, uh, directly connect to crosswalk at. Miller School there on Evans. And so, um, this question really is for the city engineer's office. So when we look at the, uh, responsibilities in the section regarding, uh, these matters in their, uh. Rulebook, it's noted that local jur- and I quote. Local jurisdictions, school officials and other related agencies or groups which have concerns about pedestrian. Traffic control on state highways should contact the district traffic engineer in their area. So, um, Mister Cobb, are you convinced that with the petition and the testimony we've heard here tonight? That your office should raise this concern as noted in the Y dot policies? So we can begin the process of really getting a professional and thorough evaluation. Of that situation to see what sort of, uh, traffic control is warranted. Um, and I think that we've heard enough tonight to know that, uh, there is great concern and certainly legitimately so. So. Um, is your office willing to communicate to the district traffic engineer as these, um. Responsibilities are noted in their policy to seek that analysis?
President Rebel, through you to, to Councilman Labor, y- yes, sir, of course, but I, I would like to add that. There is another step and that step is to come to the traffic safety committee, um, which is comprised of the district personnel, myself. Uh, Laramie County School District Number One and, and the police department. So we certainly wanna bring that matter first to that group. And then, of course, I think in conjunction together, we would go to the district, which. Obviously, Mister McCourt is a part of this group. So, yes, the answer is yes. And would I would like to add one more thing before, I wanna make sure that all of us understand that, again. This is under the jurisdiction of Whiteout. This is their right of way. So I wanna make that clear.
Mister Labor. Thank you. Um, so I believe that at the last meeting of the, that, uh. School Safety Committee, this issue was raised by the principal of, uh, Miller School. And so this is, uh, not something that, uh, um. Is unknown and, and I, I wanna really emphasize here, we've talked about this. Everybody that sends their kids to the school have talked about it, principals talked about it. And, um, it is a well-known problem. So I hope we're not gonna be delaying, uh, to any future, uh. Efforts here because, um. Uh, what happened once is, I believe, actually destined to happen again, uh, in this very unique situation. So. I do believe that that, uh, concern was raised by the principal at that last school safety meeting. That's what she told me anyway, but in any case, um, is that a monthly meeting that you're referring to?
President Rebel, through you to Councilman Labor. Yes, sir, it is. I was not at the last meeting. Mister Bay took my place at that particular committee meeting. I have not seen the notes, but I'll certainly look at it and we're willing to support it and moving forward with the district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Labor. Any further comments or questions from committee? Under other business. Doctor Aldridge?
Uh, thank you, President Rebel. Um, just a couple of comments. I wanted to say I had the opportunity to, um. Go to the Lincoln, the, um, music venue last night for the Gatlin Brothers and, um, uh, really a lot of people there and. Um, definitely a variety of concerts. I think they had Hairball on Friday night. I don't even know what Hairball is, other than what cats vomit up, but. Um. I think it wasn't that evidently, um, but Gatlin Brothers did a really nice job and it was, um, it looked like a lot of people that were there. Um, council and coffee, uh, for Ward Three is going to be held this Saturday morning, um. From nine A M. to eleven A M. at Das Bog at the corner of College and Pershing. So if anyone would like to visit with council members, that would be a great opportunity, um, to hap- that's happening in Ward Three. And then I did want to mention that there is a silent witness march on Saturday, um, morning, starting at nine forty-five at the Supreme Court Building to the Laramie County Library. Um, and in a, um, recognition and awareness of, uh, those who have died in our community from domestic violence. So, um, would like to invite everyone to participate in that if they're available. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from committee? I did. Mister Cook, could you move your microphone a little closer?
No, I'm plenty loud enough.
Okay.
Um. Anyway, Mister President, um. Just, I wanted to give a shout out real quick, uh, not oddly enough, but ironically enough, today. Um, I went to a, I guess we could call it a little bit of an impromptu memorial service, but, uh, a tree planting for. Uh, the young man who, uh, who died in the traffic accident on Lincoln Way at, uh, McDonald's. Um. Labor Day weekend, I, I believe it was, I'm, uh, friends of, friends of that family. He was a teenage driver himself. Um. So a little bit opposite of the, the situation that the ladies, uh, here speaking about tonight, but, um. So really, you know, that, that, that really just hits home. And again, you know, having, um. You know, teenagers myself, young, young adult drivers myself, um, that is something that that really hits home, but. Uh, really my, my, my purpose for, for bringing that up, so I just, I wanted to give a shout out. I, and hopefully somebody can pass this along to the mayor, but I know, I know there are folks that, uh, um. Here that will pass this information on where it needs to get, needs to go, but, uh. Um, our forestry folks were, were out there today, uh, and they coordinated very well with the family to print it, uh, plant a memorial tree. In, uh, Myler Park, um, their staff was really professional. I know a few of them personally. Uh, they, they, they really did a nice job, uh, with that family. It's a very tough situation. I just wanted to. Give them a, a pat on the back. It was, it was, uh. Obviously a very emotional, emotional thing, but our, our staff was, was very caring, uh. Mister Ellison and, uh, Vinnie and, 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 and a lot of those other folks were, uh. They did a very good job with that and I just wanted to, uh, give them on a, a, a pat on the back. I, I know they do that quite often. Uh, they get a lot of requests to do those types of things. So, um, they, they just were, were very sympathetic and, and very. Uh, very compassionate and I, I just wanted to, to bring that to the light.
Thank you, Mister Cook. Any further comments or questions from committee? Mister White?
Uh, Mister President, just a, just a quick word. Um, I volunteered as a course marshal for the Girls on the Run event. Uh, that was, took place Saturday morning and, um, I was a marshal of, to these folks' point and even this was a Saturday. At the crosswalk at the corner of Education and Carlson. And, um, even though I was out there with a yellow vest on and, and I, uh, worked with Officer, uh, Kaylee Price. I believe who was a delight. She was excellent. Um, thank goodness she was there because, uh. Somebody in a yellow, uh, vest certainly wouldn't have been able to, uh, control, uh, the traffic. Going back and forth on that particular street on a Saturday morning with a lot of young ladies running across that street. Uh, without, uh, the presence of a police car, uh, with the sirens and, uh, Officer Price doing a tremendous job. Directing traffic there. So, uh. Uh, I think all of us here certainly recognize the importance of, uh, of. What Mister Taylor's talked about and we certainly sympathize with you, ma'am. I'm certainly grateful that, uh, it wasn't worse, uh, but. A year after the tragedy that befell, uh, Mac, uh, by McCormick. I, I just don't know what it takes to, uh, to really look at ourselves and understand that, that, that the, uh. This culture of, of, uh, speed and motorized vehicles, I, I, I don't get it. As particularly, uh, in and around areas of schools. Um, I don't understand it and, and all we can do is, uh, really do whatever we can and. Take heed of the recommendations provided by the school safety committee that, uh, you work on, Mister Cobb, but I, I really just hope people. Stop being in such a hurry, uh, don't drive distracted and just, um, slow down around schools.
Thank you, Mister White. Mister Esquiel, did you have something?
Oh, thank you, Mister President. Another, uh, personal shout out, our, uh. Son-in-law has to structural engineering test, which is probably one of the most difficult professional tests there is out there. So now he can. Bamp architectural and engineering work. We're very proud of him. Yes, that's a hard test.
Thank you. Mister Johnson?
Okay, sorry about that. Actually, when Ryan brought up what happened today, I can't, I wanna tell Jason and his crew, whoever. When I was contacted about a bench in honor of, uh, the kid that passed away at, um, at Lincoln Way at McDonald's. All of a sudden, the family sending me a picture that a bench was already at the skate park and it was less than four weeks. So. I don't know how we got it that fast, cause I put in other requests. It seemed like I'm getting, or I hear about it a year later, but. Jason, I don't know how your crew got something accomplished that quickly to get a bench ordered, placed, engraved. You know, up at the skate park. I don't know how you did it that quickly, cause it seemed like it was done in three weeks. So congratulations on your work on. Getting that done, cause I know I forward you the initial request to see what we could do. I didn't expect it to be done in three to four weeks.
Thank you. Any further comments under, uh, other business? Hearing none, we are adjourned.